Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 3 regular meeting of the Zion City Council. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Commissioner Fireson?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Mayor McKinney?
Here. Item number three, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Brenner, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, the Lord, the State, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Brenner. Leading us in prayer tonight is L.E.L. Rojas from Christ Community Church. Pastor Rojas, how are you this evening?
How do I feel?
I should say, ¿cómo estás? Usted.
That's great. Father, as we just mentioned in the pledge, we understand that we are a nation under God. We are so thankful that we can have the freedoms to express our religious beliefs and also, Lord, that we can contribute, asking you for help. Our understanding is that you are King, Sovereign, over all the nations, and, Lord, part of your rule is given to us, people. The Bible says that you give us authority to rule, and part of that rule is government. We understand, Lord, that you have delegated this authority to civil government, and we are asked to pray for those in authority, to give honor to those who deserve honor. And that's what we do. We are asked also, Lord, to pray for those in authority, that we can live peaceful lives. And, Lord, also to pray for those in authority because they are servants of yours that are dedicated to govern. And, Lord, so we pray for those here this night who will be making the decisions for the city, and, Lord, also for their families. We pray, Lord, your blessing over them and over the items that they will be talking about. We pray that you give them wisdom and discernment. And, Lord, we thank you for their families, and also, Lord, we pray for the police department and the fire department for your protection of them. Lord, we want to thank you once again for the opportunity that we have to live in a country where there are laws, and in Jesus' name we have these things.
Thank you, Pastor Rojas. Item number four, agenda changes. Do any of the commissioners have any agenda changes? If not, is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented? So moved.
Second.
Motion by McDowell, second by Holmes. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Michelle?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item number five, citizen comments. Mary Lou Hilterbury?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner. During the month of eight, Asda volunteers donated over eighty-seven hours to the city for a value of $2,490. We assisted the police department with traffic at an accident scene and performed a monthly siren test. We assisted the park district with the monthly food pantry and also with the Drive to Easter event. Additionally, we did duty times to maintain the center and the vehicles and participated in training. If you love our city and would be interested in volunteering with Asda, go to the city website and fill out an application. We welcome new volunteers. Thank you for your continued support. On another note, I would like to mention the men and women of our police and fire departments. We were called out this morning to assist with traffic and rehab for a fire. While there, I observed them in the cold rain, working to protect the people of our city and their property. I have seen them out in the sweltering heat, and I have seen them with ice forming on their uniforms because of the cold, and still they are there. I don't imagine any of them said, "I want to take a job where I will be subject to rain, snow, or heat." They chose their career to help people, and these are the things are a side effect of it all. No one said, "I want a job where I can be in danger any day," but still they are here. They come in on days off to protect us. They can miss holidays and family events for us. Are they perfect? No, but they are ours and they care. I am one citizen of Zion who appreciates them. Thank you all for keeping us safe.
Thank you, Mary Lou. Thank you very much. Kenneth Endress, he's the Great Lakes Naval Base rep. Thank you, great to see you again.
I'm back again. Can't get rid of me quite daily.
That's all right. We're always happy to see you.
As before, I am here representing the commanding officer of Naval Station Great Lakes and Captain Jason Langston, and here to greet you again as elected officials, as well as the staff of Zion and the citizens of Zion. Just wanted to tell you that the Navy's only boot camp is back, fully operating, and we'll be graduating about thirty-seven thousand recruits this year. And with that, as they become sailors, they will go out and support and defend our nation in our protection and security. As a lot of the communities around Great Lakes, Zion is no not exempt, I should say, from serving as residents, providing homes and services to our military and supportive Great Lakes employees and sailors, which we duly appreciate. I'd like to indicate that, again, that obviously any of you had a question for the commanding officer of Naval Station, as any other fellow mayor in a sense have, can reach out to him, but I have another order of means of communicating with the Navy. And with that, I will open up to certain questions if the commissioners or the mayor would have of me now.
I don't think we have any at this point, but we have your contact information, and certainly I know you work closely with our police department in the past on some couple of issues, which we greatly appreciate, and we will reach out to you here and continue to be in contact.
I will be talking with your city administrator afterwards because I would like to provide an opportunity for businesses of Zion or the city to be on the front page of a pamphlet that is sent to our recruits' families, so hopefully some businesses come to Zion in the future.
Okay, thank you very much. Item number six, consent agenda?
Approval of minutes of a regular meeting held April 19, 2022 at 7:00 p.m., and approval but not released of closed session minutes of a meeting held on April 19, 2022 at 7:58 p.m.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes? So moved. So, motion by McDowell?
Second.
Second by Fireson. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
abstained.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries.
Bills, vouchers 140497 through 140574 drawn on Huntington National Bank, total $842,438.22.
Is there a motion to approve the bills?
I'll move to approve the bills.
Second.
Motion by Fisher, second by Holmes. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item number seven, discussion authorization approval, 7A, consider quotes for water heater replacement for Fire Station 1 per Chief Street.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. Attached are two quotes, actually a third that I put by your station there, I'll talk about that in a second, for the replacement of Station 1's water heater, which has been leaking and is expected to fail soon, potentially without notice. And following the city's purchasing policy related to emergency purchases, Commissioner Fireson was contacted and received verbal approval from other commissioners to proceed with the project. Staff has attempted to receive three quotes for the project, but only two were submitted after lengthy and time-consuming attempts. Zion's code plumbing has been identified as the best quote and will install a tankless water heater, which will also improve efficiency and is more environmentally friendly. I'm requesting formal approval of the code plumbing quote of $13,105 for this project. There's a slight change in that total amount, that's why I gave you the updated quote after looking into a couple of the details of venting and stuff like that, so I appreciate your consideration of the project.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Fireson?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Questions, comments?
I have a quick question, a couple of quick questions, Chief.
Yes.
So you decided to go with the tankless system? Is that because the eighty-gallon commercial here, I think they run about eight grand apiece?
Yeah, a couple of reasons. Cost was definitely one of them, but it was actually good to talk about the differences and realize the environmental and efficiency differences, too, and it just seemed like the best fit to go with the tankless system.
Now, the other, the one concern about the tankless system is corrosion within the tankless unit. Was that discussed at all with code plumbing on how they combat that?
Conveniently, our Director of Building and Grounds Lieutenant Chief Messick is here today. He can potentially answer that a little better than I could. He's been a little more intimately involved in the product, in the project. I don't know specifically about the corrosion question.
So I don't have an exact answer on that. What he did say is that as long as we are consistent with some form of a preventive maintenance, annual preventive maintenance, that they should last as long or longer than any tanked water system. And I don't know, I believe Commissioner Fireson has seen the photos, or maybe that haven't, when that station was built, there was not a lot of thought put into placement of some of our units there. The hot water heater was actually built behind the HVAC units, boiler vent tubing, and the rest of our water pipes. So the way that we're doing it right now is significant savings because each, we were going to have to have a separate company come out, remove the boiler vent, the two pipes took for the boiler vent, and then the plumbing company would have to come in, tear out all the water pipes, remove the hot water heater, put the new hot water heater in, redo the water pipes, and then I had to call the other company back in to redo the vent pipes for the boiler. And so obviously, with just the labor costs alone, of people coming multiple times to do multiple jobs, was going to be significant. So we went with the tankless also because by doing that, there should be access to that with, so ten years from now, or, well, already years last, ten to fifteen years now, ten to fifteen years from now, the next person that comes in is going to be able to get back there with no additional deconstruction of what's going on in there to repair or replace or whatever.
So, the, what's the core cost of the tankless unit itself? Because that's not really spelled out here. Because I understand ancillary, you know, piping, labor, everything else, but the unit itself, what's the cost on it?
Labor plus parts is $12,355.
Okay.
That's the second one, thirteen one oh five. I can get you the info on the exact cost.
Well, the thirteen one oh five includes the $750 to remove, there's one section of pipe that we're going to have to remove-
Right.
-in order to remove the old water tank, and that's the additional $750 for removing those pipes, taking from the water drought and replacing those pipes.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
The only question I have is, the water heaters last about how long? I had one replaced in my house quite a while ago.
I mean, back in the day, they lasted a long time. Currently, the current water heaters that they have right now, they, I've never heard anyone tell you that they'll last longer than fifteen years. Usually they'll stay ten years, so for current hot water heaters. So if you get one that lasts fifteen, like our current one in that station right now is fourteen years old, and they said, "You've got your life on that," so.
Okay, thank you very much. A wait, a motion and a second, any additional questions? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item 7B, consider proposals from Deegan and Associates for environmental engineering services for the closed Zion landfills per Director Roberts.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. Attached is proposal for environmental engineering services for the closed landfill. Services will include groundwater monitoring and recording, landfill inspection, and reporting that is required by IEPA for closed landfill permits. IEPA has approved the requested permit modifications to reduce the analytical cost of groundwater sampling by conducting recording on a semi-annual basis rather than quarterly. Staff requests and recommends approval of proposals for environmental services from Deegan Associates of Liberty, Illinois in the amount of $26,735. The proposed contract is for the fiscal year '23 and will be budgeted out within the waste fund.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve this proposal.
Second.
Motion by McDowell, second by Holmes. Questions or comments?
Director, how, how much longer are we on the hook for monitoring the, these landfills? Do we know?
That is a big question.
So, okay, we're, we're still talking maybe a couple-
We're still probably talking about it fifteen, twenty years.
Maybe a decade, maybe more.
One reason behind that is there was, when this landfill was capped and filled, it was never had the sheeting underneath it and wrapped, so it's all sealed with clay.
Okay, so there's, there's no-
Creates a constant maintenance.
There's no polymembrane that's containing the landfill waste? Okay.
And in order to put that in there, we'd be talking.
Oh, yeah, it would be cost prohibitive to do it now. Okay, yeah, thank you.
Director Roberts, has there been any advancement with the solar company?
I have not heard, I did talk to Director, our Administrator Naval on that a couple months ago. That was held up by IEPA with the company that was interested. I don't think it's not a done deal, and I don't think they're not going away, they're still working through some issues. So the possibility is still there. That's a long answer.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item 7C, tabulation of bids, 2022 Water Replacement Project per Director Roberts.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. This is the big one. A bid opening was held for the 2022 Water Main Replacement Project, was held on April 19. Attached are results from bid opening, recommendation letter from Burke Engineering, and the bid tag. The lowest responsible bidder was Camden Melvin Sun of Wadworth, Illinois, for the base bid and alternate bid 1, 2, and 3. Staff request and recommend awarding the base bid home loan to Camden Melvin Sun in the amount of $1,198,078.97. Funding for this project will be included in the fiscal year '23 water budget. Copies of the bid tags will be unfiled in Burke's office, Public Works office, and posted on the city website.
Director Roberts, you said this is the big one? Could you say it in the voice of Fred G. Sanford?
I'm not very good with it. What you see is what you get.
All right. I won't finish that one. Is there a motion?
I don't know.
I'll make a motion to approve this bid for 2022 Water Main Replacement.
I'll second.
Motion by McDowell, second by Fisher. Questions or comments?
Is the reason we're not accepting the alternates 1, 2, 3 is because of finances?
Yes, sir. The bidding, or the lowest bid on this was probably thirty percent higher than what we were anticipating.
Would you consider these to be ready projects so that if grant money became available, we could immediately tap into that?
Yes, sir. That is our hope.
Yeah. Okay. One question. Ballpark it. On the base bid, how much pipe are we replacing?
We're approximately 1,400 millimeter feet of six inch to nineteen thirty. It was placed in nineteen thirty.
Yeah.
We're upgrading it to a eight inch, so you're getting a larger pipe. This also includes some sanitary sewer lining within the project and, of course, the alley. But the pipe was the big issue. The numbers are interesting, and I'm hearing from other contractors talking around that they're anticipating another pipe increase cost of another twenty-five percent by June.
And it's because, the demand is so high, the prices are going up?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. So I have to get to work doing some more begging for some of that infrastructure money that was being placed out.
I was about to-
Yeah, I've been working on that, been working on it. Item 7D, tabulation of bids, replacement of council chambers furnace and AC per Director Ayerson.
Thank you, Your Honor, Commissioner. The city received two bids for the replacement of the council chambers furnace and air conditioning, both for response. Northern Runway received $19,220.59. Eagle Lane Leans Services, $19,400. Staff has recommended accept the lowest responsible bidder, Northern Runway received a bid of $19,220.59.
Is there a motion to accept the bid for the replacement of the council chambers furnace?
So moved.
Motion by Holmes?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Questions, comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item number eight, departmental commentary. Start off with Director Ayerson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a reminder, these calls today are very self-conscious, and I would like to remind everybody that only discharge on your property, not discharge on neighbor's property, city property. It's the courtesy of yours.
All right, thank you. Director Ayerson? Director Roberts?
Thank you, sir. Friday, Illinois Department of Transportation held a bid opening for our FAU 27th Street project. This is actually good news. The lowest, the low bidder on that was J. Johnson, paving company. That was for $871,468.26. That was almost a hundred thousand lower than our estimated cost. This project is an eight-twenty split, so our cost savings on this project can be right around thirty thousand. Soon as IDA approves the contract, we will get scheduled and we're going to get started on this project.
All right.
That is, the 27th Street will be resurfaced from Emeas to Galilee, Tampa.
All right. All right, thank you, Director Roberts.
Director Roberts, if I may, since Administrator Naval's not here, do you have an update on the, the working with AB group and IDA for the 34th Street location?
Everything's been approved, as far as my understanding. They are looking at mid to end of May for a ground break.
Got it, thank you.
So they're just setting up their contract. Supposedly, everything is set, you know?
Got it, okay.
It started with for the, the process.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, Director Roberts. Speaking of Administrator Naval, he is at a nuclear commission forum this week, and we've been busy telling our story to different groups pertaining to the spent fuel rights that we have on our lakefront. I was involved in a Zoom call with a group probably about two weeks ago, and the, some of the participants, probably about a hundred and fifty participants heard me speak about this, and then they promptly asked Director, Administrator Naval to speak at the next one. Now, actually, they have such knowledge of it, and we do such a great job of tag teaming on disseminating the information of what's happening on our lakefront and what we're trying to do to make sure that it's, it's being addressed from a financial standpoint. We have the energy bill from the state of Illinois that's going to kick in and benefit us in 2023, but we continue to work with state and federal resources throughout the United States to be able to come up with some solutions to moving that material or eventually getting paid for from the national government as part of the Nuclear Waste Act of 1982. So it, given Administrator Naval a couple of days out of town while he misses us, he's, I sent, he was sending a text today, said he's been making some great contacts and been sharing some great ideas with some people that he'll debrief us about upon his return. Chief Street?
All right, well, good evening again, Mayor and Commissioners. Just a couple of real quick things. This wasn't planned, but thank you, Mary Lou, for the nice comments to the fire and police department. We certainly appreciate comments like that, but I also feel it's very important to recognize some other city departments who are just as integral in the response portion of emergencies, our building department, public works department. Public Works Department, especially with main breaks in the middle of the night, just like we're out on calls in the middle of the night, just as, they're just as often out on main breaks and different issues like that, so thank you guys for your help with those situations as well. An official on the record, congratulations to our administrative assistant, Mary Hudson, who worked her last day with us last Friday. After well over thirty years with our department, she also did some time with the police department before us, so thank you to Mary Hudson for her years of service to our city. And I'm guessing I have Mr. Brenner to thank for the article on New York Volunteer Firefighters. That's a good read, I appreciate you thinking of us.
You're welcome.
That's all I have to do, all right?
Chief Bark? Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, thank you. I have just a couple of quick things. We are hiring, I want to make sure we keep putting that out there. Apply to serve. If you know anybody that's interested in a career in law enforcement, please direct them to applytoserve.com and select the Zion Police Department, you can fill out all your information there, and if you are from the city of Zion, there is no fee for the application. And then just a reminder to community, if you have an issue within your neighborhood, you have, you can look at our city website and find where you live with the district map and contact that your district started right from there with an email, and they will, they will promptly respond to whatever issue you might be having. That's all I've got tonight.
Okay. Commissioner McDowell?
Mayor, I just want to point out that I think all of the directors tonight addressed you, honorable mayor.
Yeah.
So I think they heard that message last-
I paid them. I get called everything else on the community, so it's good to have it here.
I just want to say a word about the National Day of Prayer. So this Thursday is the annual observance of the National Day of Prayer, inviting people of all faiths to pray for our nation. It was created in 1952 by a joint resolution of the United States Congress and signed into law by Harry S. Truman. This year, the observance will be held at the Cancer Treatment Centers of America at 7:30 a.m. in the atrium, and then there is an alternate location at Cornerstone Community Church on Delaney Road at 6:30 p.m. That address can be found on the National Day of Prayer website if you wanted to attend that one. I'd like to invite everyone to attend one of these observances or pray in your home or at your place of business. Uh, the National Day of Prayer is a vital part of our heritage since its first call in seventeen seventy-five, when the Continental Congress was asked, asked the colonies to pray for wisdom in the forming of a nation. And Abraham Lincoln also called our nation to a day of fasting and prayer in eighteen sixty-three, um, at the height of the Civil War. So, the National Day of Prayer has great significance for us as a nation. It enables us to recall and to teach the way in which our founding fathers sought the wisdom of God when faced with critical decisions. It stands as a call for us to humbly come before God, seek His guidance for our leaders, and for His grace for our people.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. You, you stole a little bit of my thunder-
Oh, sorry about that.
No, that's great.
Yeah.
Love it. Commissioner Fryerson?
I'm good, thank you, sir.
Commissioner Holmes?
Nothing.
Commissioner Fisher?
I have nothing for tonight, thank you.
Well, I just have a, a little bit, and I'm gonna have a little fun with, thank you about, uh, bringing up the National Day of Prayer, but May is, uh, national, uh, May is a, a month of national holidays, and, uh, for example, it's, uh, Asian American and Pacific Highlander Heritage Month. And when I think about that, I think about the diversity that we have in our community and how important it is to celebrate that diversity, which I think we've done a tremendous job of, of doing that. And I remember a couple of years ago, uh, when Commissioner Holmes first came on council, she was, she was saying that one of the things that would be great to have here in Zion would be some kind of festival in which we were able to celebrate all of the different heritage, uh, and the, our diversity in our community. And at some point, we're hoping some people in our community that are, that are listening will take this up, cause I think it would be a great event to have. Uh, America is the melting pot, and Zion is kind of a microcosm of what we're seeing throughout, uh, the United States. Uh, also looked at, as I was looking at the Mas- May National Month, it's Better Speech and Language Month. So, I, uh, today I was focused on my enunciation as I was talking to people, and, uh, for some of the, uh, comments that I get on the street, I was also trying to keep my language clean. Uh, Correct Your Posture Month, uh, Mi- uh, City Clerk Spooner, uh, you're gonna have to sit a little straighter in that chair. We might have to get you a chair. It's, uh, Jewish American Heritage Month. Also, it's National Military Appreciation Month. Mr. Brenner and all of the served in the military, thank you for your service and what you've done to defend our country. Uh, National Motorcycle Ameri- uh, No- National Motorcycle Awareness Month. I'm gonna put on my, uh, motorcycle chaps and get out there. No, I'm not. It's also a very important month, National Mental Health Awareness Month. And one of the things that we have seen quite frequently during the pandemic is the mental health of every American that has suffered, suffered from being shut in. Uh, I wanna thank our, all of our department heads, our city employees, our police and fire, our commissioners, uh, for how we deal with our residents when they do call us. Because there are a lot of times we don't receive the kindness of phone calls or addressed in the kindness of ways, but yet we manage to respond in the appropriate manner to try to educate our citizens and help them, uh, when we can. So, let's all remember, for those that watch and listen, let's just be kind to one another. It's a great way to be, and that's what this city has represented for many years. Another important, uh, 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 May National Month, Date Your Make Month. As busy as we all are, uh, all of us should make sure that we spend that time, uh, away from our work and spend some time with our families and significant others, and make sure that we give them the same attention and the devotion that we, uh, do to our city. And I'm very appreciative of the commitment of everyone that works for the city and especially the, the commission, commissioners, what you do, or city attorney. Thank you very much. And for me, Ray, you're gonna love this one. It's Older American Month. I thought you would've, uh, let me know about that already. It's also, believe it, it's May third, and it's, uh, National Bike Month, so we're waiting for the weather to clear up so we can get out and ride our bikes. Mike, I'm still looking to get that, uh, electric bike that we've talked about. Looking forward to the great weather. I applaud those people that put their rain gear on and get out and ride. Uh, I just can't do that quite yet. It's like golf. I golf in the seventies. When it's seventy degrees, I golf. And another important month for me, National Hamburger Month. We've got plenty of places in town to go and get a good burger. So, uh, got Culver's, we got, uh, every place in town. Like, we got Mickey D's-
N T's.
N T's-
Zogos.
Zogos, El Lago.
Burger King.
Yes, we, we, uh, Burger King, we, we've got them all here, so frequent those places. And I was thinking, as I'm driving back today, uh, I had to attend a funeral of a, a, a great friend of mine, Mary Dee, who was a legendary newscaster in Chicago. And I was driving through North Chicago on, uh, Green Bay Road, and I stopped at the, uh, Mickey D's there, uh, for quite, and it was the first Mickey D's that I ever, first place I'd ever eaten a McDonald's hamburger was at this place when my family lived in North Chicago. So, I had a little trip down memory of that lane today. And I think that's a, I mean, there's, oh, National Photography Month. I know Kathy Champagne, one of our residents, is always out taking, uh, photographs of, uh, wildlife. And your photography is absolutely fantastic, so it's National, National Photography Month as well. And when I think of National Preservation Month, we have the Historic Society here that building needs some work, but if, uh, I had a friend in town that was visiting us and, uh, wanted to go over and take a tour of our, uh, Zion Historical Society. But also, when I think about preservation, I think about the preservation of what we do to maintain our homes here in the area. I thank our Building Department, uh, for the work that you do that week in and week out all year and making sure that, uh, our residents, if they're renting, uh, that everyone, the landlords, have their apartments and homes up to code appliance so that their life and safety issues are, are addressed. National Moving Month, but I don't think we're going anywhere. At, toward the end of the month, of course, with Memorial Day, National Water Safety Month. And we know that as the weather gets better, people will be out on the lakes and probably having, uh, one drink too many. So, uh, we'll make those reminders out. I'm sure they'll do that in Lake County too, in Western Parks, uh, about National Water Safety Month. Uh, more announcements? Uh, tomorrow, exciting day, May fourth. At seven P M., there's a special meeting between the Zion City Council and the Zion Township Board, and we are going to be voting on the new Welcome to Zion signs. And I wanna thank, uh, Commissioner McDowell for his suggestion on this, as we're looking to replace signs in our, our city that have been in rapid decay for quite some time. People have called me about it, and I said, instead of fixing them right now, we're gonna replace them. And Commissioner McDowell came up with the idea of involving our high school student to come up with designs for the signs. So, uh, the high school board and some of the members over there, uh, set out guidelines for the students to follow. There are a lot of applications, and it's whittled down to three, which we will vote on tomorrow. And this is just another example of, of our Zion Leaders Group of us, all the different taxing bodies, all coming together and trying to see how we can work together and save resources and also get our youth involved with what we're doing at the city council, high school level, park district level, and every other level here, uh, within the city. So, thank you, uh, Commissioner McDowell, for your thankfulness on this. I'm just trying to kind of, uh, pick brains today about who like what signs. Just three final signs, and they all look great, and, uh, that will be happening tomorrow at the South Commons at Zion Bitten Township High School at seven P M. May seventeenth, at six P M., we have a Zion Township, uh, Board Meeting, and at seven P M., uh, Zion City Council Meeting, right here at the Zion City Hall. And May thirtieth, the city office will be closed for Memorial Day. Item number ten, where we're gonna go into closed session pursuant to five I L C S one twenty slash two, the Open Meetings Act for the discussion of filed pending and or probable or imminent litigation, sale or purchase of real estate, collective bargaining, legal counsel, and personnel. So, thank you for coming out, uh, this evening. There isn't anything that we have to vote on. So, thank all of you for coming out to our council meeting again, and we will see you on May se- seventeenth, unless we see you tomorrow at, uh, at the Zion Bitten High School. Drive safely and stay dry. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Fryerson, second by Holmes. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Oh, also it's National Barbecue Month. My boy Max.
Is there anything left for any of the other months?
Oh, they're, they're, they're the whole best. Yeah, it's, it's amazing. National Digital Awareness Month this week.
Oh, really?
Uh, Dracula's is probably to use in jokes.